Free margaritas.
Hello.
I'm having technical difficulties.
Yeah.
You only have one of me now?
Sorry?
You only have one of me.
We only saw one of you before.
There's only one of you.
Well, I saw that, I did see that there were three margaritas were gonna come in. But once you, once she admitted you, we only saw one, so.
Okay.
We never actually saw three.
All right, that's good.
It would be nice to see three of you.
I'm sure times in her life she wishes that too.
I know that there's people in my family who may beg to differ.
How you doing Greg?
Well, technically.
Seven thirty? Since when have we had a, we've never.
That's what I'm saying, I'm flying, I'm like.
We've never had a seven thirty meeting ever.
How you doing?
I've been that before, been late for historical commission because we start at six.
I got into doing some AIA's on the computer and like big stuff and trying to put them all together, look up and like. I haven't even made it home yet.
Harry, no cable?
No cable.
Okay.
What do we have?
Because one, um, Roff hasn't given us any payment yet.
Okay.
Two, well, we haven't heard from him that, and then two, um, the applicant for tonight, for some reason, the attorney had a conflict. Something came up last minute and need to have access to most of this to continue to next month.
Does that work for my room? That might not work for her though.
Good question, but she wouldn't.
Have we called to order yet?
You want her to be there, then, um, she can attend by June that night.
Let's find zoom members in that area, yeah.
No Jonathan, we have not officially started the meeting yet.
Okay.
Discussion is gonna be.
Yeah.
Margarita has some kind of update for us. I haven't heard it yet either about Stonegate, and then that's pretty much it, so.
All right.
Uh, we are good. I will officially call the meeting to order. It is seven oh six. For the regular meeting for public hearing for Dyson zoning board of appeals, uh, if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
What do we just say to the flag of the United States of America to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited, justice for all.
Right, first on identity is to confirm our next meeting date, which will be April twenty second, two thousand twenty five, um. Yes. Um, next thing to go into, um, I'm gonna take something, uh, one item out of order. Go to number five, I for the public hearing for Makeup Enterprises LLC. That was continuation from our last meeting, um, I'll read this to put this in the record, but officially, but just so everyone knows, the applicant, you know, the applicant or the attorney had a conflict. Something came up last, relatively last minute for tonight, so he asked us to have a motion to continue. That being said, I'll read this to put this, this in the minutes, but there will be no discussion of this topic tonight. Anything will be continued to our next regular meeting. This was sent, um, from attorney Cassavant, uh, Monday, March twenty fourth, this is, uh, two days ago, nine thirty in the morning. Carrie, thank you for speaking with me today. I do need a continuance of tomorrow's hearing to April twenty second, two thousand twenty five. I apologize to you and the board for any inconvenience this may cause. And I appreciate their consideration allowing the continuance. Please confirm we have a moment. Best, Rick. And then, which obviously Carrie did confirm, um. Motioning to continue, do we need the same voting members of that case, or just can three voting, can three members do make that vote?
Margarita? It should be the same voting members of that case if possible, otherwise you may, I mean, you took no testimony tonight, but you would need to address. Um, it further, so if you have the three voting members there, I would suggest you just go with that.
Greg.
I was here.
Okay, and I, I was one of them, was, and you were one of them?
Nope, no, John, it was me, Jonathan.
So we can't.
Elise and Jonathan.
Because John is here, I am here, but Elise is not here, so it cannot be the same three members, but two of them are.
But I, I was attending.
But Greg was here that night, should we, should we make him the new third member, so he can help make that motion tonight? What do you suggest we do?
Yeah, was, and David was not here that, that night?
I was on Zoom.
He was on, he was here.
Present as well, okay, so.
The information, yes.
Yes, so then, I, any three of you can do it tonight, and then, um, you took no testimony at this stage, so.
Right.
If Elise is, is back for the next meeting, you just should make an announcement that she was not. Present at this past meeting, but no testimony was taken, and so you're gonna continue with her being appointed as a board member, and you won't have anyone substitute for her.
Okay, sounds good. With that being said, I'll make the motion that we continue the Makeup Enterprises LLC. Case that we had for tonight to our next regular meeting, April twenty second.
So moved.
Any discussion? Calls in favor?
Well, well call.
Yes, sir, thank you. I, Zachary, Karen?
Hi, Greg Logan.
Hi, David Phillips.
Hi, Jonathan Gale.
Okay, that being said, we're gonna move on to four I to review, discuss an act, Stonegate Landing LLC. We have Margarita here on Zoom, and she has some, uh, updates or regarding some discussions she's had revolving, sorry, revolving, involving this case, so I'll turn it over to Margarita.
Okay, um, I'm not positive what you've all received in terms of, um, prior. Agenda packets, so Carrie, I'm gonna first ask, has the board received the letters from Chief Nichols and Chief McGee?
Um, yes. Regarding.
About them, gee.
I thought we did from on, only one of them.
I don't think the.
At our last, I'm not saying our last meeting, the last time, we heard, we heard from the fire chief. Is there a second one from the fire chief, or is she, we have, we haven't seen anything about the police, from the police chief yet?
No, CNN.
Or, or are you talking about recently?
Uh, no, they were, they were sent a few months ago, and they would have been before, potentially included in a packet.
Fire chief definitely was, I don't, I, I'm.
I don't remember.
I don't believe the police, the police chief was, because I remember thinking that, I will, you know, just saying that, I'm definitely not doing any discussion on it until we've heard from both.
Okay.
So Carrie is, Carrie's double checking now, but I know I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to go through on email if I can quickly.
So if it was two months ago, it must have come in like right after.
Hasn't deliberated or discussed that, has it?
No, no, the, the, the fire chiefs, yes, the, the police, uh, the, it was during the minutes, but there was really no discussion, so I wanted to wait. But the police officers, uh, police chiefs, no, we've had no deliberation on that one.
Okay. So, um, there was, I looked back through my notes, the last time that we had a substantive discussion with the developer was the December meeting.
Yep, very sense.
There were, um. There were some open items at that time. One was this one-way entrance, you were waiting on the opinion letters from the police and fire department, and they, it was recently been sent a request from Richard. So you have that still, that's been, at least some of that's been put before you and been provided to the developer.
Yep.
Um, there was a question around, you know, not having the developer use, um, Weston and Sampson. As a peer reviewer and, uh, an engineer that he would abide by. And we addressed that and said, he certainly has the right to choose his own engineer, and we will continue with Weston Sampson to do the peer review.
Yep.
There was some issues about, um, the homeowner at nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing.
Yeah.
You know, ultimately, the developer and the homeowner were advised that this was a private matter, but, but Mr. Fedorov said he would follow up directly with the homeowner. Um, and he felt that it was, um, something that he would report back to the board on, so he was gonna address that because he feels that there is. Some access concerns, um, that they may have, you know, taken advantage of, of the access to the one-way entrance, then they actually shouldn't be doing that. Um, and then there was some work that was supposed to have been done on the roadways and in some of the culverts. Greg, as you may recall, you were really focused on some of this. That Jeff was planning to do, um, I think, before Thanksgiving, but he said he was gonna actually do it later that week.
Yeah.
It was worked at the, the town conservation agent was recommending. Um, catch basins, it was a whole bunch of different informations, of pieces of information, and then there was some pothole issue, there was a pothole issue at the start of the one-way street that had been repaired. And there were some plans that Weston and Sampson was looking for, that Richard did submit that night, and they were.
Yes.
Provided.
Yep. I just said, two, real quick for the record, just to catch everyone up, reminder. Since those that all discussion that she's talking about, we have not, Richard has not been here for the past two meetings anyway, so it's not like, you know, uh, what? So the last she's talking about, we haven't had, we haven't seen him, it's not like we haven't discussed or anything, we, he hasn't been here, so we, it hasn't been brought up at any of our past two meetings. So this will be the third meeting now, Carrie, so this will be the third meeting without him.
So, you know, you also may recall a few meetings prior to that, Richard had been talking about. How he wanted to do some more repair work in the roadway, but that he felt that it made more sense to. Do some of this initial repairs and then wait through the winter and get, you know, get started actively on it in the spring.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think that the board wasn't necessarily in disagreement with him, because it was the board's understanding that he would be continuing to come before the board. And provide updates to you. The email that he sent today, which I think is in your packet, um, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong. Email that was sent today, when he was asked if he would be appearing before the board, was that he is not planning to appear, and he will reach out to the board. When and if he needs the board's assistance, um, and he would like to appear before the board. Now, obviously, this matter was on your agenda and was scheduled, so you have the ability to discuss it tonight.
Yeah.
To talk about how you wanna proceed, um, I think that at the very least, the board has some pieces of information that it was looking for some updates on, and it has. It has this ongoing discussion about the one-way entrance that possibly needs to be brought to a close, because if the. The public safety officers in the town are not supporting the proposal from the developer. The board needs to take an official stance on that as well, so that you can move forward with the, you know, layout and the use of the roadway, um. Consistent with whatever's been designed and permitted, um, so I do think that there really should be a time for you to meet with the developer, and as much as. Up until now, there had just sort of been this general, let's continue the matter and have another discussion at our next meeting type of conversation with him. Now, given his email, it seems like maybe he just has forgotten, it's been a few months, um, but in all likelihood, it doesn't appear that he's planning to come back to the board anytime soon. I think that because it's the beginning of the spring, because building season is starting again, because, you know. Your asphalt plants are opening up, and you have this ongoing concern with the layout of the roadway and the, and getting the roadway finished and repairing. The binder coat that's down there.
And or replacing it.
Sorry.
It's fine.
I, I believe that you may want to consider sending Mr. Fedorov and a letter through your secretary and.
I thought that too.
And it's, and essentially telling him that you will be putting this on your agenda for next meeting, and that you are. Are requesting his presence, so that he can provide an update to the board on the areas that were outstanding. Um, and to also be able to bring closure to the discussion about the one-way entrance in light of. The communication that has been received from the town officials.
Um, so a couple of things, I guess a quick question first. I person, if, if, if it's, if we are allowed to do this and you think it's okay, I personally do not want to do it next meeting. Only because this continuing, the continuing of the matter that was, the matter that's being continued to that meeting, that one with the, with Summer Street. That's gonna be a big meeting, and I remember thinking last month. Thank God Richard wasn't there, but nothing against him, but like, that would have been a long meeting for any, for the other side to wait, or either one to wait. So is it okay if we request it for May, or do you think it needs to be April?
So my only comment to that is simply that, if you recall last year, it seemed like all of a sudden, we were talking about this roadway repair. For well over a year, and now the year disappeared on you, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I hear your point, and I agree with you that having him involved, um, in addition to another extensive meeting. Um, would be a lot, it might be worthwhile for the board to think about doing a special meeting with him.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And that you.
That's so, yeah.
To, I, I, you know, unfortunately, we don't know his schedule, but, um, you might want to choose another Tuesday night in April. That you might want to look to invite him in to come and meet with the board, and that you're gonna hold a special meeting to get updates and to speak, and it will be exclusive to him. And, um.
I also wanna do that for the butters too, because I know we have, uh, you know, at, at least one or two who attend our meetings, even if it's on Zoom. Religiously knowing that it's on the agenda, and I feel bad for them having to sit on Zoom, waiting. Two hours, and, but I mean, think about with the, of the summer, that could be an hour and a half. So I also would like the butters to know, guys, this meeting will be just for that, don't worry about the waiting, don't worry about wondering, you know, that's also what my thought was too.
This is Jonathan, and my, my concern, I, I somewhat feel that if we go beyond April. And I'm going to the characteristics of change and not showing up and cancellations.
Yeah.
You know, if we go beyond April, and then we have him in May, and he says, I can't make that, then we're in June.
Right.
And then, and then by the time we say, can you get something done, well, I'll get it, we could be into August or September again, et cetera, et cetera.
That's why I think we'll do the, we'll have it as a special hearing, that so it's still within April, but not our meeting date.
Well, the other thing is that if you did it early enough in April, and you thought that he needed to come back, you could always schedule him again for the April twenty second.
That's what I was thinking too, so like.
For, well, April first is a little early, but April eighth or fifteenth would still be one to two weeks before your April twenty second date.
And both work for you.
So as far as I know, yes, both of those work for me, um, the April twenty second date is actually the hardest date for me, I would, can only attend by Zoom.
I know, we're feeling it was school vacation week.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
No, so it's, no, not you, but the, we had a butters tonight showing up, and we had told, told them that it was being continued, and they were like, great, school vacation weekend, I was like, I know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that might be another reason why perhaps maybe a different date in April might work.
So because, so when you had first mentioned about the letter request, I was gonna, not only have Carrie send it out a hard copy letter, but one, also do it certified mail. So we know more tracking on it, but also two, do you think the first letter? The, uh, the, the letter should be requesting the presence at the special hearing, and then in that letter, should we say? Uh, regardless, you will definitely at least be on the twenty-two, i- it was twenty-second, or do we not even mention that part?
Um, you may wanna ask him to also hold the date of April twenty-second, because if follow-up is needed, you would intend to put him on the.
Right, if it's, it might not be, right, okay.
Can we also, are we, in that letter, um, where we listed the things that are still outstanding?
Yeah.
Can we also ask him in that appearance to come with us, come to us with the final timeline for each of those items?
And who? The best, yeah, yes, and I would say with the note saying to the best of his ability, because a, a couple of things in his, the defense, um. I'm not talking about the three, the nine thirty-nine entrance issue, I'm talking about the one that's involving town officials.
Right.
But like I said, as of right now, we've only heard from the fire chief, it wouldn't be fair for him to say, we need the police chief too, but we're waiting, wait, sorry, Carrie's motioning to me.
So, I'm sorry, yeah, I.
No, no, please, no, please do.
Know, so you don't.
No, I would, yeah.
Um, the chief, uh, Nichols, police chief, he did respond, actually, the same day, and he's saying that he couldn't, um. He doesn't feel like, that, that, he feels that the gate would compromise.
Okay, so, okay, so I take that one back, then we're not, we're not, I, I wouldn't want us to ask him to give a timeline for things, for some things that he's like. Well, if you're waiting to hear from someone, so when you have it, I can't give you a timeline on that one, but that's a moot point a- at this point. But yes, John, I, I do, I do agree, I think it would be a good idea to, to ask that from him.
Yeah, I mean, I think, rather than, I would guess my wording would be, rather than like a final deadline, I would ask him to give a dates. Specify the date by which he intends on taking. Action on these items and what that action is, because he, you can't get, you're actually better off knowing that first steps that he's gonna take to make road repairs. And when he plans to do that, then trying to have him say, I'll get the road repi- finished by the fall, you know, that doesn't really help you all.
Right, right, um.
I think I would ask him to specify, you're, you're going to be asking him to provide specific. Specific steps that he plans to take to address the issues along with the estimated deadlines or dates on which those actions will be completed.
Right, the only, the only thing, and maybe this is something that the board can take a final stance on tonight, per your recommendation, Margarita, is. The nine thirty-nine regarding the right, the, the. Railway that, that, that a resident shouldn't have been using and all that kinda stuff, it's a private matter, I would like to take a sentence that tonight saying. It's a private matter, we're done talking about this one, I'm sorry for, sorry for Fedorov's frustration with that resident and vice versa, but. I'm done wasting time on things that legally, we really can't even have an input or. Say on what, not input, but say on what happens, do you think that would be okay, Margarita, take that stance tonight, or wait?
I mean, we've already told him that, I think that he needs to just be, we can say, state in there that we would, we under, you know, as you were previously informed, this is a private matter between you and the homeowner. It relates to potential access concerns about that homeowner using the one-way entrance as his driveway, and so. While the town realizes that this is not, um, something that they have any authority to, to, um. You know, to require, to, to mandate the owner on, um, we are looking for an update as to whether or not you've had any communication with that.
Okay, so just simply, I, I, I don't even want, and I don't even want to know anything about the discussions, just if they've had communication, yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the important thing, because at some point in time, if he doesn't have communication. With the private homeowner, there are other legal rights that may attach and make this, the ability to keep that homeowner from.
Right.
Having access rights to that one-way entrance, you know. Different.
Right.
But again, these are, this is a private issue, I know that Mr. Fedorov believes that the town may have some implication in here, and if he does, then. He needs to pursue that on his own, you know.
Right, not on, not on the board's time, I agree.
It's not something the zoning board has any control over.
Right, and of, of course, we'll say, should him or that resident want any information from us, the office will be happy to provide whatever. Things, you know, if they need to see any details on something, well, I'm not, I'm not saying we're taking no part of it, if they wanna, if they need to. Reach out and say, can we see a copy of X, Y, and Z, but of course, we're happy to do that, but there'll be no. Opinions or requests from us, it'll be strictly just providing information at that point.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning board really only has the information in its file and the permit itself, which.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean, yeah.
That area is supposed to be used as a one-way entrance, if there's any concern, of course, that. There could be, you know, some challenges brought against the town, I would absolutely notify town council about that.
Correct.
But I think the town council is already aware of this based on my prior review of documentation.
Margarita, if he, if he doesn't respond to this, or tries to kick the can to May or June, or shows up and said, I don't have a timeline. If he doesn't perform what we're asking, one way or another, by no show or by no timeline, or commitment to a timeline, or doesn't keep the timeline. What are our next steps as a committee, just in case, because I think that's really important to know what are.
I agree.
So your, your, your authority here as a zoning board, as with anything, is to withhold approvals. For, um, and that could mean, you know, for, for Mr. Fedorov, it would mean any further. Uh, permitting steps towards any of the building permits that he's looking for, um. You know, we, but the fact that there isn't a bond necessarily being held at this time for this, this part of the development, there would be for the next phase, of course. Um, but, but really, that's true with any forty B, your authority, if the developer's not complying, is to with, is to notify. The building department that you would, you know, you're requesting that they not issue. And, uh, building permit, a foundation permit, any, any type of permitting that might be requested at this time. If there is any other type of approval that he's seeking from the town. Then you would ask that that be held up, and it would impact his ability to, to do business with the town moving forward until he came before you. It's not a good spot for a developer to be in. And I haven't seen him respond that way to the town, you know, outright. Um, I do understand that this has been a very, very slow process, but you had more control over it originally when he came back before you a few years ago. After having not been before you for a while, because he was asking for the board to change, you know, change who the, essentially, who the developer was going to be for phase two.
Right.
And so there was a request before you, there is no pending request before you at this time. You do have authority though, because you are the board that oversees the development of this forty B to. To send him a letter and request that he appear before you. And, um, when you.
Margarita, do we have the ability, if, if we, if he doesn't show or doesn't comply, and we follow through with it, with the, the no permitting component? And then he comes to the, and then he says, but I need a permit to such and such. Do we then have the ability to go back and say, okay, if you want the permit, because of your past such and such, we want you to post bond? Can we go back and ask the bond again?
Certainly, there, it's going to be hard to enforce, um, unless you can tie it to some type of relief that he's requesting.
Do we need an official vote to ask his request or no?
You would need a vote to request that the zoning board secretary send a letter to Mr. Fedorov.
Okay.
Requesting his presence at whatever meeting date you decide to establish, you need a vote to establish that meeting date, and if you want me to work with Carrie on drafting that letter, I'm happy to do so.
In that letter, can we also, because this might not be able to be decided tonight, give him. Options of special hearing dates, or do we say, it's this date, end of story? Because if he's like, I couldn't do the eighth, but I can do the fifteenth.
So that's the struggle, because he's not here.
I know, I know.
To set up a meeting, so I think that you will need to schedule a meeting, and then you'd have to hold another meeting in order to change that meeting date, so.
So, and while we're very kind of briefing on the topic, so the police station has a small. I'm, I'll call it a conference room, it's not a meeting space where you could put chairs like this, but. That has internet connection, we've done, I've done historical commission there before, so in terms of meeting spaces, the only pro, the process for that is simply reaching out to the police station and saying. Is it booked or not that day? They say yes or no, if they say no, we, we, we book it. Um, so that being said, in terms of like, well, we're gonna meet primetime, will it be here? We could always do the police station, because that wouldn't be one that would have a high amount of public in person. Even if we had a few, it'd be fine, I'm not sure what the occupancy is of that room, it's probably thirty or something like that, but, um, I just don't. Know about the Zoom aspect from that room. You know, for that, we can't do Zoom there.
I tried to do that.
All right, so that being said, I take back what I said, because people would be attending on Zoom, so never mind, I think, I take that back, okay.
Well, we don't, we don't know that, we don't know that he would be on Zoom, we don't know that yet.
No, but the public would.
Some public, we, we, we need to provide the public that, that, that option, that's why.
Because some of those residents in there have attended by Zoom.
Right, and, and even if there are none, I think we still have to provide that option, correct? Oh, no, no, because, no, because historical commission, we don't, so, okay, so, and unfortunately, we can't, we ask them now, could you come in person? So, well, never mind about that meeting space, but.
The only way we have to provide it is if a person, if a person with disability asks us to provide it, then we are required, but otherwise.
Oh, okay, then, then we have to, okay.
Correct.
Um, so April eighth is not available, because both primetime and this, uh, location is already taken, so the only one that would work right now is April fifteen.
Margarita, why did you suggest that it had, it should be a Tuesday?
Only because it seems like Mr. Fedorov has been available on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
I, I just don't know what else he has going on in his schedule, so I thought that perhaps Tuesdays in general work.
So.
Typically, Wednesdays to Thursdays is when all the meeting, this meeting will.
So then Carrie, as much as this. Unfortunately, we have to do this because he's not here tonight, I would say do something similar to what we did when we were planning the workshops. With planning board, like give a list of dates, even if they're not, even if they're not Tuesdays.
Zach, let me, let me ask through Carrie, um, for the, the eighth, for example, is, are we, could we potentially meet at six, from six to seven, is it available?
The, my, my only thing with that, John, is that I bumped it, we, we bumped into this issue with historical commission a few weeks ago, where we always have this space booked at six. And for some reason, the, a board that changed their meeting date, decided to meet here at seven. But didn't, anyway, but it turns out they showed up at seven, it's like, we're not done yet, so I wouldn't wanna do that when we know that someone else might, may need it.
Even on the eighth, those two boards that are meeting is both, they start at seven. Even on the eighth, those two boards that are meeting is both, they start at seven, which is the same time.
But, but John was saying, could we do six that night? And even if we, could we technically, yes, but also if we're not done by seven, I don't want that being, that be a problem, so.
Well, but we already talked about the potential of having to continue it until our regular meeting to finish up. So, if that were the case, I mean, an hour is a fair amount of time, and then if we had to finish up on the twenty-second. It's just a matter of keeping him reined in, so we don't go back to hash the same things we did earlier.
John, that's a very good point, that's a good point.
I will add that April twenty-ninth is open.
But then at that point, that's almost May at that point, but, so, I mean, which, no, no, I know.
If you're looking at multiple dates right now, you have the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Well, I think the fifteenth should definitely be one, the or one.
Kerry, is, is the, is the eighth available at six?
No.
Are there any other weekdays, weekday, weekdays besides Tuesday, Kerry, for those, for, for those first two weeks of April? Here, or here, here, or prime time?
At six or seven?
It's a holiday, so that's all.
Do you love this Patriots Day or the day of the week that is?
Marguerite, are there certain evenings you're automatically not available?
Thursdays are generally not great for me and.
Okay. Thank you, John, good question. Should have asked that.
It's okay.
Why am I here, Zach?
Your date, so I can do the fifteenth. I mean, you could, you could note the fifteenth and you could tentatively reserve the room for the twenty-ninth, and then if he needed two weeks instead of one week.
Okay. Okay, right, that's a good point. So we can do the fifteenth at six.
And then we could do the twenty-ninth or continue it to the twenty-second and finish up after the other.
So the fifteenth, I guess, I'm trying to understand, I understand six o'clock if there was a meeting beforehand, but is that hard for the. Butters if we start at six?
There is a meeting that goes from four thirty to six, and that's bored to hell, so.
Heck, yeah, there's not happening. So, so we can't do the fifteenth, because there's no space to meet.
Well, you could at seven.
Could at seven.
Oh, oh, right, oh, right, I'm sorry, right, okay, okay.
From four thirty to six.
Oh, right, it was only gonna be six o'clock for the eighth. If we, if we wanted, but.
Let's avoid confusion and just eliminate the eighth, because the eighth is not gonna.
Okay, so no eighth, okay.
No meetings.
Okay. So, so then I guess that's, well, you know, we'll do, we'll just make that the, the date, but we'll, we'll say, we'll have, when motions go into effect. We'll, we'll make sure we say, the fifteenth is what we'll say for the special meeting.
At six. You wanted that at six?
It was only at six to avoid another comment with another board.
So we want to do that at seven.
Right, right, because that's not a point anymore, then yes, that could be regular time at seven.
If for some reason he notifies the board that he's not available on the fifteenth at seven, then I think at that point in time. We, Kerry can work with him to get a date that works, that is also available for the town and check with all of the board members. And you can open the meeting on the fifteenth and continue it, and the public will know. Is it going to the twenty-second, is it going to the twenty-ninth, is it going to a date somewhere in between that?
And worse comes to worst, and Marguerite, you're a good person to back me up on this one, sometimes meetings are long, and sometimes you have to wait. Like, when we had the selectmen's meeting where Kerry has to go to request to have Kerry be the, the legal counsel for zoning. We were under the impression that we were gonna be one of the first item agendas and we'd be able to by six twenty, that was a very, very long meeting. And we were, it was, I'm gonna say, close to two hours before we were finally heard, so if that has to happen, then that has to happen. Sometimes that does have to happen, I was just kind of trying to do what I could to avoid that from happening. If it was a forty B meeting, that'd be a different story, because of the, their, their ballgame, but.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think if you start with the fifteenth, you already know you have the twenty-second on. Um, in case you need to ask him to come back, we can, in the letter, you can ask him to hold. That date as well, and should he be needed for a further update. And if you want to reserve, have Kerry tentatively reserve the twenty-ninth, you could change your mind on the night of the fifteenth.
Okay, and that being said, Kerry, while it's on my mind, can you put nothing else on the agenda for the twenty-second? Like, should you get something else that pops up in the office, can you please not put it on?
You mean, you mean the fifteen, Zach?
No, because the fif, the fifteenth would be a special meeting just for Fedorov, I'm just telling Kerry for our regular meeting the twenty-second, to not put anything else on. Should we have to discuss Fedorov that night?
Okay, but, but we already have the other one that was deferred to the twenty-second.
Correct, I didn't want anything new coming in.
Oh, okay.
So if she's an advocate job tomorrow, trying to get on the April twenty-second meeting, I'm, we're gonna have her tell them, no, we have to wait till.
I wasn't clear, I'm sorry.
Okay. Kerry, do you have any more, any more discussion, input or anything?
I do, just went, and so, Marguerite, I wanted to touch base a little bit on the fifty-three G account.
Oh, thank you, Kerry.
So, we've gotten some additional payments, uh, sporadically, twenty-five hundred here and there. Right now, I've been able to get caught up on the gay and gay bills with those deposits. Leaving a balance of twenty-eight ninety-three.
Twenty-eight dollars?
No, 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 two thousand.
Oh, okay, I thought after all that, okay, okay.
Two thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, so that said, we still have, he has a Weston and Sampson. Invoice that has a balance due of fifty-five ninety-six, so. Um, basically, I mean, he has enough money in there to pay about half of that bill that's due. And then, so the remainder, I would need additional twenty-seven ninety-eight, we'll say twenty-eight hundred dollars. For an additional payment to make everything whole. So when I make that request, I'm thinking you guys want some kind of buffer in there?
I would agree, Kerry.
Right.
I, I mean, Margaret, you agree?
Should be established on what that should be. Or at least what this request should be, maybe that, maybe that's a better way to word that.
I think what we had told him before, going back when we first had him adding more money to it, is that we wanted a buffer at that point, and we had asked for a buffer to be ten thousand dollars.
Right, that kind of sounds familiar.
He's not making that now.
I'm sorry?
He's not making that now.
No, I understand that, but I think, so I think what we should do is ask him for ten thousand dollars to pay the cur.
Can't, you, you're right, I would, I would love to, but we're not gonna get it, we're not gonna get it. So I'm not saying we can't, I'm not saying we shouldn't do a buffer, but it shouldn't be that number.
Well, even, even if we ask for a total of five thousand dollars and we tell him how much is outstanding, that's, that leaves a buffer of twenty-two hundred roughly, twenty-two oh seven.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, what I'm trying to get at, how much, now that Weston and Sampson's contract is done.
Yeah.
We, we were using that contract saying, all right, because it's this much, we want ten thousand.
Right.
Well, now that that's done, now what do we want for a buffer?
Not, and I, not anything above five.
Sampson still have to do their walkthrough, even though it was a third party for us, the town of Dayton, who's paying for that?
Right.
Well, good question.
My honest opinion, we should stop, cease, stop all permitting for that project that's going over there. We're never gonna get the final bond money, it's not gonna happen, he doesn't have enough to finish the project, we're just wasting our time. So, my honest opinion, cease and desist with permitting for that job over there to him until he comes in front of the board. That will get him here, then we can talk to him, see, enough's enough.
Can we do that, Marguerite? I don't disagree with that.
Absolutely have every right to send that letter right now, you can send a letter to the building department right now, asking that, because he has not shown up before you. And continues to have an outstanding balance on your consultant fees that all permitting cease, be ceased and desisted. And that, the, the, you are requesting his presence at meetings in April.
I actually, I admired Greg's approach, I say we do that.
Zach, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna disagree halfway, and I'm gonna suggest, instead of doing that, without giving him. We've given him opportunity, it could be argued, but without giving him ar, opportunity now, I'm gonna argue that we put that same. The, what, what, pretty much what Greg is saying, in a letter, your failure to appear and your failure to respond with blah, 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 may result in. Let's let him know in the letter, this is what we're thinking, as opposed to just doing it.
Um, good point, Greg, what do you think?
I'm fine with that, I just, yeah, in order to get him here, you need to.
That's what, that's what, I, well, that's one thing that Kerry and I talked about today, I called her just for some stuff and I, I brought this, this topic up. And I said, you know, I, did we, at one point, I said to Kerry, did we at one point talk about saying, don't come unless you don't have the payment, and then Margaret was like. Well, we need something to get him here, so no, we probably shouldn't do that, I said, good point.
Believe there's only five house lots left on that.
So, I.
So, there's not a lot left, and allowing it to continue on without, the road's never gonna get fixed.
I think that's a good point, Greg and John, I think we should say, that will, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even use the word may, I say that will be the case. But it's not, but, so, it's not the case yet, but it will be, if that happens.
So let me, let me, let me, let me, if I can, let me, let me try a draft motion, if that's okay.
I don't think we need to, Kerry, do we need, how much detail do we need on the draft motion? Or does it?
Are you asking me, Greg?
Yes, I'm asking you, like, what, for, for, yeah, what?
You'll first of all need a motion to establish a, a special meeting for, this is, um, um, having. Discussion about Stonegate landings.
Yeah.
And then a motion to, um, authorize the zoning board secretary to work with the zoning board legal counsel. To send a letter to the developer, requesting his presence at the special meeting. And asking for him to update the board on outstanding items. And advising the developer that if he does not appear at that meeting, or, and, or fails to. Replenish the fifty-three G account at whatever dis, number you ask for it to be replenished at. By that meeting date, that you will be notifying the building department that you are seeking to have all permitting. Uh, ceased and desisted.
Okay, I'll make that motion when we get there, let's just ask this one question first. Okay, thanks, um, let's just say, uh, um, so let's talk about now, what dollar amount should that be? Again, factoring in, realistically, what are we going to get, I obviously, we would love to make it ten, but what, what number do we think we should say, Marguerite?
Are we billing, do we bill for Marguerite out of that account when it relates to him?
Correct, yes.
Which is why, which is why we're under, so when he made the deposit for the fifty-three G account, it was only for the. Weston and Sampson proposal, none of that took into the account of the legal cost.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
That's why there's been this.
And I would, I, I would go for five thousand dollars total.
Yeah, so I was, I was thinking too, obviously, but, John, I would love to say ten, but, but if we're not, if we're, we're not going to get it, it's stupid to ask for that. So I think, I think five's good.
And the only reason I'm even thinking of, you know, suggesting that we put this in a letter to him as opposed to tonight, is. I'm getting the impression from the way he's not responding, that he may be in more financial hardship than we know, and that's not, I'm sorry.
So, you and I both, yeah.
So, so if that's the case, you know, let's give him the carrot before the stick and, and use it as leverage, that's all.
Well, then the other option for the board is to not mention the fifty-three G account at this time.
I'm not going to.
Bring it up with him, not put it into the letter and bring it up with him in your discussion at the next meeting.
I, I was planning on doing that, just to avoid the worry-ness of the motion, but also, but also legitimately too, all right, so that being said, I'll make. I'll make a mo, not request, I'm making the motion to establish a special meeting, um, on April fifteenth. At seven PM here at Old Town Hall, um, for strictly and, sorry, exclusively discussing, um. Stonegate landing with, uh, Richard Fedorov, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I, Zachary Karen.
I, David Phillips.
Hi, Greg Logan.
Hi, Jonathan Gale.
Okay, I am also going to make the motion that, uh, the ZBA office manager worked with, uh, ZBA legal counsel. To draft a letter, cer, certified letter, uh, that will be sent to Mr. Fedorov, requesting his presence at that meeting. Well, ask it and asking for updates on the outstanding items that have already been discussed at our previous meetings.
So moved.
And discussion. Yeah, yeah, good.
I, I'd like to clarify that motion a little bit more, if we could.
It, was it something that, was it regarding something that Marguerite had said, or no?
I want to make sure that that motion includes asking him for specific timelines.
Well, yeah, um, I, I've discussed specific timelines, it's, it's tough, there's whatever updates he can provide, if. I don't want to put that in a motion, if he can't do it, then that's gonna be not working against the motion that we made.
All right, but I do think that motion should include letting him know that failure, failure to appear or to provide information could result in, and that.
That should be in there too, yes, thank you, John, okay, so, um, adding on to that, uh, that. It was in the letter, it's a failure to, uh, respond, or, um. Not provide us the information that we're seeking will result in us reaching out to the building department. Requesting that there's a cease and desist on any permits for that property, that project. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I, Zachary Karen.
Hi, Greg Logan.
Hi, David Phillips.
Hi, Jonathan Gale.
All right, um, Marguerite, anything else? Obviously, obviously, we can keep discussing this, but is there anything else you want to talk about for tonight regarding this?
Nope, that, that covered my discussion about tonight.
All right, sounds good, um, that being said, we'll move on to our other item agendas, six correspondence, Kerry, I assume we have nothing? Seven public input, obviously, we have nothing for public input, but I'll just ask board members, anything unrelated that you need to discuss, anything?
Zach, the only question I have is, I believe we have one member who has not been in a couple of meetings now, three, I think this is the third, maybe the fourth.
Yes.
And I don't know if there's an update on that, or if that person is resigning.
Thank, thank you, John, um, that, yes, so there, we do, uh, it, we're talking about Sue, um. I, I don't want to go into doing personal information, she's okay, it's, it's nothing to do with her. Interest on the board or her, any, anything like that, we've, we've heard from her, again, I do, I do not want to say anything publicly about it, she's okay, and. Um, but, to, to the best of the, I feel comfortable saying publicly to you, John, is that it's, we don't have to worry about her commitment to the board or anything like that, don't worry.
Okay.
All right, next is to.
Leave it there for now.
No, thank you for bringing that up, I wanted to mention that, um, approval of meeting minutes for February fifth, twenty twenty-five, I make the motion, oh.
I gotta make a motion, um, there's some stuff that need correcting, uh, meetings.
Oh, thank you, all right, good.
Um, I'm not in it. Yep, I came late.
That's right, that was when he came late on.
So, I just, I don't care, you can change it at any given time, but after that, everything else looks great.
I think this is the first time we've had to make an edit to meeting minutes.
I do, I do read the minutes.
Historical commission, and I'll say this.
Sorry, I didn't feel, I didn't feel welcome.
We've never, that's, no, that's so funny, we, so it wasn't like, oh, you, you miss this one day, it's like, yeah, I'm not in it at all.
Nope, nothing.
All right, so.
Greg disrupted the meeting. What the heck, I'll sit on the meeting desk, just stop putting one on his leg, say this.
That being said, I will rescind my motion and instead make the motion that we approve the meeting minutes from April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. With the condition that we edit them to make sure that it is noted that Greg, in fact, was in attendance at the meeting.
My apologies.
Totally okay.
Second is.
In this discussion, all in favor, I, Zachary Karen.
I, Greg Logan.
I, David Phillips.
I, Jonathan Gale.
All right. I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I, Zachary Karen.
I, Greg Logan.
I, David Phillips.
Jonathan Gale, aye.
All right, we are all set, thank you, everybody.
Have a great evening.
See you later.
See you on the fifteenth.
Thanks, Marguerite.
Bye.